All right, I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. I'm calling the meeting to order and I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell, Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Right.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest Cate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We're at item four on the agenda. If there are any residents that would like to make brief comments to the council considering an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to make your way to the podium at this time. We just ask that you clearly state your name and address and please keep your comments brief. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that's not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over those. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I move for A and B.
Got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Carrier 7-0.
All right. We're ready for Patsy and Planning Commission Report. That's the lion's share of the agenda tonight, Patsy.
Okay, they were...
Y'all had a long meeting, I know.
This one works. Okay, I thought we had a new one.
I think I was here for almost all of them.
I thought I was good to use the new one. This one's short compared to probably what it's gonna be next time, not to scare y'all, but anyway. The first item on the agenda is a request to rezone 13.91 acres located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Bob Mills and Oak Grove Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to Plan Unit Development, PUD. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval, and I want to go over the details of the PUD as we normally do. This is the project...
Wait, you said from A1?
From A1 to, I'm sorry, from MF16 to PUD, I'm sorry. It had already been rezoned to MF16. They want to rezone it to a PUD because they want to increase the density of the...
Because of what?
They want to increase the density of the project, okay? So we're gonna be talking about the planning development plan for the Ramsey at Springdale, which is the name given to this project. It consists of four tracks that you can see in the document itself. It will be called the Ramsey at Springdale. It is 13.91 acres. The development strategy is a multifamily, high-density residential development which will serve the community in enhancing social connectivity between the residents of the Ramsey at Springdale and the surrounding amenities, internal sidewalks, from all buildings and maximum social and the community interaction. The apartment buildings will be appropriately spaced to promote, encourage relaxation, recreation, and social activity. The permitted uses will be limited to Use Unit 1, which is citywide uses by right, Use Unit 12, high-density residential uses, and Use Unit 27, parking lot. So as you will note, this is not a mixed-use facility. It is for apartment units only, and it will be for the parking lots and city uses by right is what will be contained in this PUD. The total developed area is 13.91 acres. They have 7.42 acres of impervious area, 6.49 acres of open space for the total of 13.91. All of the buildings will have a 30-foot front setback and 8-foot side and a 20-foot rear. And here are the elevations of the buildings that will be included in this project, and that's the layout as you can see. Parking is provided, 1.10 parking stalls per bedroom, 1.65 parking stalls per unit. For a total of parking spaces required of 429 stalls, and they are actually providing 441. So there'll be some excess parking for visitors to the facility. The amenities that are provided will be interior sidewalks, a park with a pavilion, a dog park, benches, trees, natural lawn areas, a swimming pool, and landscaping throughout the side. The exterior building materials on the walls will be stone veneer, lapis fiber cement or LP smart siding, board and baton fiber cement or LP smart side, and brick veneer. The roofing will be architectural shingles colored to be weatherwood slate or terracotta, corrugated metal roofing at awnings and canopies colored to be galvanized gray or black. They will have painted seal brackets, balconies and awnings, and cedar or cypress timbers. The windows will be vinyl windows to be either white or clay, and the exterior doors will be fiberglass doors that are painted. This is under one lot, one property management system. The property is to remain in a single ownership with all common areas to be maintained by the owner or through an agreement with a management company. The garage is to be used for the parking of vehicles and shall not be used as storage units or living. Parking on the grass is prohibited. The development will be accessed from Oak Grove Road and 48th Street. As you can see from the site plan, it has access on both sides. The sidewalks will be constructed a minimum of five feet wide on all common areas as shown on the site plan. Privacy fences are not promoted. There are no chain link type fences will be allowed. Services for all public and quasi-public utilities will be located underground. Landscaping will meet the requirements of the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, for landscaped street, drainage buffers, perimeter landscaping, and interior parking lot spaces and parking islands. The number of parking stalls proposed to provide a minimum of 1.1 stall per bedroom. The total number of bedrooms with this development will be 389. The total number of parking stalls will be 441. Based on the experience the developer has with this type of development, we feel this amount will be adequate to accommodate the high-density residential. Sidewalks leading from each building through the site to 48th will promote connectivity, walkability between the development and nearby community attractions. Plan landscaping will add to the aesthetic pleasure of the streets within and adjacent to the development, and they submitted a lighting and landscaping plan that promotes security and surveillance. And that's basically the elements of the PUD itself. It's a lot simpler when it's one management and it's all multifamily buildings. There's not as many details to go through and remains as one property management. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request and the title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from medium, high-density, multifamily residential district MF16 to Plan Unit Development, PUD, and declaring an emergency." And as you know, the development plan and the site plan is part of the zoning ordinance itself.
Okay.
Patsy, was there any objections?
No.
The law just be adopted.
Got a motion and a second? I want to ask one question just while you got that picture up there.
Okay.
The, I'm assuming that's detention up on the upper left?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Are, so, and this is an off-the-wall question, but the detention just to the south that was put in when the supercenter was built?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that just for the supercenter or is the, is the idea that that will serve more of that property to the south as it sells, or do we know that yet?
That's a regional detention. It takes care of all that stuff that goes in around it to get to this...
So it'll take care of everything, everything that will be built on the, what was initially developed?
On the, on the south side of all this property, all the way to 48th goes to that regional detention.
Gotcha.
This is to pick up that additional from this site that doesn't go into the, I think it kind of breaks, some of it goes over to 48th Street, and some of it goes to that back corner, and they're detaining so that we don't, we don't impact those houses that are on the north side of Mill Street, or Bob Mills Road down through there.
Okay, thank you.
Will there, will there be fencing on this north side? I see that house is like, super close to it, like, or is it wide open to...
I think the landscaping plan shows that there's some landscaping buffers between there, but it's residential to residential, so it's not, it's not required to have a lot of screening.
Even if it's still MF16 without that screen?
Does it have screening on there? I'm looking at Connor, he'll have to tell me the details.
The fence is not on Bob Mills, so if you leave Bob Mills going east, there's...
Okay.
But I think there is some...
Right. Yeah, I think there is some screening in there with landscaping, but not fencing in there.
I don't think, Jeff, did she get your question? Because that's not what I heard, Jeff.
She was just asking about the screening. But my question is, is there no difference between an MF16...
There's, there's some screening requirements between a 16 and, and a single-family. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I can look it up for you if you want to know what it is.
So they've had more restrictions with MF16?
Well, I don't think they did any less screening requirements than what was with an MF16 in this PUD. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have asked them or allowed them to do anything less. I didn't, I don't have the landscaping plan with me, so see what it is.
I didn't have my microphone on. I think I heard you say there was 389 units?
389 bedrooms.
389 bedrooms, and that's what the parking is based on.
How many units is that?
Um, hold on. Connor, can you tell me off the top of your head?
I think you had it on another slide, maybe.
Yeah.
It shows, um, how many units? Connor, can you go over the number of units, please?
272, not 272.
272, yeah.
So how many, it's 13 acres?
13 acres.
If, if we were to take, at one point in time, somebody came and asked for this property to go to MF16, thinking that they wanted high-density...
Correct.
Apartments, probably, I guess, MF16.
Yes, yes.
And if it were still to remain MF16 on 13 acres, how many apartment units could you build on 13 acres?
Okay, somebody will have to calculate it out. I don't have a calculator with me.
Something less than 272, obviously, because you said the reason why they're doing the PUD is because they wanted higher density.
Higher density, yes, that's correct. They wanted a higher density.
Well, why do we want a higher density?
Well, we want, we want the ability to have a quality project with a higher density and with a PUD we can get that.
Why can we not, if, if, if our problem as a city is a higher quality, why can we not do something to our existing zoning ordinances instead of having to have these PUDs come in with a higher density every time? Do we need a higher-density zoning?
We have an MF24. They could have come in with 24, but we don't have as much control with it. The minimum standards we have in multifamily design standards is all that they can do.
How this benefits us, how it benefits the city?
Okay.
I understand how it benefits the developer.
Okay, we know exactly what we're gonna get. We know what the buildings are gonna look like, we know how they're gonna be placed, we know where all of the amenities are gonna be placed, and once we approve this, if it gets sold to somebody else, it's gotta be built the same way. If we do a standard MF24 or MF16, all they have to meet is the minimum standards.
Well, I mean, why would we have rezoned it to MF24? I don't think we would have. I mean, it was already MF16.
Well, if we had rezoned it to MF16, they could put it...
It is MF16.
If, if we had rezoned it to MF24, they could have put 16 units per acre and do just the minimum. If it's rezoned to MF16, they can put, they can put 12 units per acre and meet just the minimum. To get to the 16, they have to be able to meet some of the incentives to get to the higher density.
What are those incentives?
Uh, different kinds of material, more open space, more amenities, those kind of things.
Well, we did design standards for apartments, right?
Yeah.
Some years ago.
Yeah.
And, and you're saying those design standards are not adequate?
Well, they give us a better control in that we can, we can start with 12 and go to 16 with the incentives. If they want to rezone it to MF16 and only build 12, then it's just the minimum standards. And you gotta determine if the minimum standards is enough.
By definition, though, minimum, MF16, MF12, they're all gonna be minimum standards. It, it, design standards are gonna be minimum standards. We can go up in what we ask for...
Right.
...by doing this PUD.
Right, right.
Okay, what, how did, how did we go up on this one? From what, what they might have done with an MF16?
We have more open space. We have a higher-quality construction.
We have more open space with more units? Is that what you're telling me? There's more open space because there's more units? I don't understand.
We have more open space. We have a higher-quality construction in the building. We know what the materials are gonna be, what they're gonna look like, we know what the minimum, the amenities that they're putting in there. We have a higher-quality product that we know is going to be built just like this. I don't understand why that would be a problem. If the developer's willing to go that route...
It's not a problem. I want that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Why can't we put it in our design standards?
Well, because our design standards have to be minimum. We're gonna have to spend some time increasing our minimum standards, and I don't know what that does to recent legislation that puts stipulations on what you can do with design standards.
That's true.
And, you know, there's been a lot of legislation, or legislation at the state level that has changed what we can do with minimum standards. I don't know, and that's something Ernest would probably have to do some research, can, without everybody agreeing to it, can we change those minimum standards in our multifamily design standards? I don't know. When we sit down and work with a developer who wants to do a minimum or a higher quality, more units on that, we've been able to sit down and work with them on PUD regulations, and it works well.
Yeah, but the trade-off is, is that we have to go with a higher density, right?
Not always.
That's basically the trade-off.
Well, I guess, I guess you could say that, yeah.
It is in this case.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's not all bad either.
No. And it also gives the opportunity to do, again, mixed use. They chose not to do that with this one because there's, there's facilities closer to it. If we go with a PUD in other cases, we have a way to do mixed use, we're just not doing it on this one. I mean, they could come back and ask for MF24 and lay it out totally different, and we wouldn't get this good of arrangement of buildings and parking and that kind of stuff because it's minimum standards again.
And it might get turned down as MF24.
But if they came in with MF16, we could get 12, and there's no way to turn it down if they can meet the minimum standards.
Right.
They could come in with MF16, I mean MF24, and they could get MF16 with minimum standards, and there's no way to turn that down either. So the question still to be addressed is whether or not multifamily design standards can be changed enough to raise the minimum to something that we can get without having to go with a PUD. So I think that's something that Ernest and I will have to, to research and see if that's even a possibility.
I don't know if the legislation that passed, do you recall, Ernest, whether it was just single-family or was it kind of across the board?
I don't recall.
This was the one Hester got through a couple of sessions ago that we bucked up about. We were concerned about our overlay district. We were concerned about, but, but this way, but, but the law is written where if the developer agrees, then there's no...
There's no question about any of the legislation.
And that's where the PUD gives us a way to help.
And it really gives us a chance to sit down with the developer and try to understand what they're trying to accomplish and how we can get that done through a PUD document, and, and it takes time. But for the most part, all of the projects we've gotten recently have been good-quality projects. And this is a good-quality project.
I'm not denying that it's a good-quality project. I like the idea of the incentives. What I don't like the idea of is the giving up of density to get those incentives.
Well, Mark, the way our multifamily design standards are written now are to encourage and to include incentives to get a higher density.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also gives you the ability to go after MF24 and build 16 and have to do nothing. That's the risk we take when we ask for an MF24 that they want to do 16. We just, we just rezoned two other projects to MF24 in the overlay district, knowing that we have some overlay district standards that we can use on those that we don't have in any other, any other place. So those MF24s were a little bit easier to, to work through because we knew we had some additional standards. But if a developer wants to do 16 units per acre, they can come in and ask for an MF24 and only do the minimum, and that's what we've got. And the minimum is, is basically the minimum, you know? It's not, it's not this kind of quality.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
No.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrier 5-2, there's an emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second. Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Emergency clause, carrier 7-0.
And as always, there's no development on these, that's why it has an emergency clause. Okay, the next item is a request to, oh, let me move on here. Is a request to rezone .32 acres, Lot 7B in Howard Acres. The request is to rezone it from MF2 to MF4. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low-density multifamily residential district MF2 to low, medium-density multifamily residential district MF4 and declaring an emergency." And the difference between MF2 and MF4 is a smaller lot size for a duplex.
It's not part of that subdivision, right? Or is it?
It is part of that subdivision, yes. There's no restrictions on that subdivision that says you can't put a duplex in it because we already checked that.
And is it, uh, fronts OYRO?
Yes, it fronts OYRO, and there's an existing structure on there, and they want to add a duplex to it, but the lot size in the MF2 is too large. It needs to go to a MF4 so that one would fit. They still gotta get sewer to it. The lot hasn't actually been split yet because they have to get sewer to it, and it hasn't happened yet.
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Is there any opposition? We're not gonna get a second?
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carrier 7-0.
The next request is to rezone 17.91 acres located on the south side of Harbor Avenue, east of West Elm Estates. The request is to rezone the property from agricultural district A1 to low-density single-family residential district SF1. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-density single-family residential district SF1 and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Are there any other questions or comments?
So on the screen that we have, it shows it going on the north side of Harbor.
Right, it's actually just the property to the south. We checked the legal description. It's just to the property to the south, and it's not that little triangle that's in tiny town either.
Any other comments? Anybody in the room? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carrier 7-0.
The next item is a request to rezone property located at 700 South 48th Street. It's a 1.6-acre track. The original quest, request that came in was from A1 to C6, and after working with the developer, the potential buyers of the property, we determined that a C5 would still address the needs that they had for this piece of property. So they agreed to downgrade the request to a C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of the C5. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the room? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carrier 7-0.
The next item is the property just to north of that track we just rezoned from at the corner of the intersection of South 48th Street and Moon Lane. It is a .36-acre track. It originally came again in as a C6, and after consultation with the owners and the potential use for the property, they agreed to downgrade, and, and they are downgrading it to a C5 as well. Plenary Commission recommends approval of the C5 downgrade. The title of the ordinance reads, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next item is a conditional use request for a use unit three, which is a utility facilities in an A1 zone. Property is owned by Ozarks Electric. They are requesting the conditional use. They will be putting on a office facility and a maintenance shop at that location. Uh, Plenary Commission remu- recommends approval of the conditional use and the title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a conditional use at the northeast corner of East Robinson and East Friendship Road is set forth in ordinance number 4030 and would be for a use unit three, utility facilities in an A1 zone. And that's the elevations of the structures that are to be built at that location.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Is that typical to have that in an A1 or is that just?
It can be in an A1 zone. It's a conditional use in whatever zone they want to go in and there really was no need to, to rezonate to anything different. The property to the, um, east of it where the solar farm is not in the city limits, so.
This is in the city limits?
This is in the city limits, right.
We need to talk with them about getting, uh, I know they've expect, expressed an interest bringing the solar farm in. We need to.
I think once we get all this approved and the conditional use moves forward, we can probably talk about getting that done.
Okay. Did we get a motion? In a second? Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else on this one? Kay Denise?
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 7-0.
The next item is a waiver request of street improvements and, uh, in connection with the I-49 industrial park. If you remember, this is a project that we've approved, uh, previously. It, the property to the east of it includes where the, uh, construction is underway and where Dixieland will go through. Uh, the Plenary Commission reviewed this re- request and recommends, uh, payment in lieu of improvements for improvements on Apple Blossom and a waiver of the improvements on Graham Road. They will have no access to Graham Road and with the 412 bypass coming through, Graham Road will be cut off, so we don't really know what, what the status of that's going to be long-term. And so the Plenary Commission recommends that the, uh, approval of payment in lieu of improvements for Apple Blossom, which I believe the developers already agreed to. We just haven't settled on amount. And then a waiver of the street improvements on Graham Road. The title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb guts and gutters and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to I-49 industrial park phase two in connection with L-2257, a large-scale development plan.
I think the resolution has option number thirty.
Yep.
So, did you say, what'd you say about Dixieland?
Dixieland is on the agenda tonight, but it's to the, further to the east of this piece of property.
Does it touch this property on the east?
Well, it touches the extended of this property to the south. If you go back and look at the aerial, the property that's on the south, on that south side goes all the way over to where Dixieland would be going through. On the backside of those houses and waldens is where Dixieland's going through and that other phase of it is that first phase that's already under construction. If you go out there, the buildings, the wall, there's lots of walls. I think all the walls are up. Yep, all the walls are up. It's a, it's a huge building.
So the only two roads that touch this property we're dealing with tonight is Apple Blossom and Graham.
Right, and it's only Apple Blossom, that little narrow piece that's right across from the entrance into.
And they're going to do a payment in lieu of.
They're doing payment in lieu of that one and then waive the street improvements on Graham Road because they're not going to access it. None of these facilities will access from them. And as you can see, the 412 bypass is going to cut that off. We don't really know.
Do we think it's going to be a?
What's going to happen?
It's going to be cut off? It's not going to go over? We don't know?
I don't know, Ben, unless you've seen something.
Not that it matters on this.
Yeah, we don't know about Graham. We're, you know.
And do we have any plans for improvement for Apple Blossom?
Well, that's something we're going to have to work on because now we have a larger portion of it in Springdale with the Bethel Heights consolidation and now we only have that small piece. And, and we have Lowell on the other side and, and I think we're, something's going to have to be done about it.
I think when and how, when Apple Blossom gets improved is going to sort of depend on our next bond issue and on cooperation, uh, with the city of Lowell. But it, it does need to be improved, especially with the expansions that JB Hunt's talking about.
So if we did improve Apple Blossom with a bond issue, what would happen to their payment in lieu of?
It would just be put into the project.
Right, it would be transferred to that project. That's what we do with payment in lieu of improvements. We hold them in an escrow account till we have a project and we transfer that over to those.
I think the motion was option three, but shouldn't it be option one?
Well, they've already agreed to.
Because option three says payment in lieu up to Graham Road.
Okay, no, it should be option one for the waiver of Graham Road and they've already agreed to the payment in lieu of.
I withdraw my motion.
You can amend it.
I, I will amend my motion to.
Option one?
Option one.
Still a good second. Any other questions? Anyone? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Carries 7-0.
These items are a little bit out of order, but anyway. The next item is a waiver request for street improvements along 412 of a sidewalk in connection with the Ozarks Electric project. They are doing the street improvements on Friendship, but they're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk along 412. There's a drainage structure down through there. We don't know whether or not the highway department would even allow them to put a sidewalk on there. So the Plenary Commission is recommend, recommending approval of this, uh, waiver request with option one. Um, a resolution approving a waiver of streets, improvements, drainage, curb gutters and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Ozarks Electric in connection with L-2258, a large-scale development.
Move the resolution be adopted as option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 7-0.
And the next one is back to the Ramsey at, at Springdale. They're asking for a waiver of street improvements along Bob Mills. Plenary Commission is recommending paver, payment in lieu of improvement to that portion that it, for instance, property on Bob Mills. Title of the resolution ra, reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to the Ramsey at Springdale in connection with L-2259, a large-scale development plan. Connor, do y'all want to? Are you willing to do the payment in lieu of or do you want to? Okay, they're willing to do that. We just need.
There's a typo on.
There's a, there's a typo in the, in the resolution that you have in your packet and I have a new one already ready to go. Yes, sorry, I didn't say that at the very beginning, but I already have fixed that. I just didn't make enough copies. I didn't catch it till late this afternoon.
Do we have any plans for Bob Mills?
There's a lot of development occurring out in that area and I think long-term, we're going to have to look at what kind of improvements need to be done to.
We're going to have to address that and 48.
48th Street and, you know, 56 is being extended. How do we get from 56 to 48? There's going to have to be something looked at in that entire area because there's a lot of development going on out there. This one doesn't contribute as much to that situation as the, as the developments to the north because it has access on 48, at 48th Street that's already approved and, uh, and they're doing the improvements or making payment in lieu of improvements for the, uh, improvements on, uh, Oak Grove Road.
Right.
I have to remember which Grove it is.
They're doing those improvements.
Or making payment in lieu of. I don't know, did, there was.
They're making payment in lieu of on those.
Okay, a, and there's some discussion about how that intersection's going to work. Uh, and they're working with engineering on getting that worked out, too.
Move the resolution be adopted as option three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone?
Hey, pass it just real quick. That top right corner, northeast, what is that? Is that the dog park area or is that what?
It's just green space, yeah.
There's a drainage culvert across 48 that discharges. Pretty close to that northeast corner. There's not much definition of there. It's pretty flat.
Make a great place to play soccer or kind of pickup game there, too.
I just wondered about a, a second or a third entrance there.
Well, in, in looking at it, I don't know that it needs a third entrance as much as, I mean, I think the traffic flows and the way they have it designed and the traffic calming they did with the parking along the street, I think it'll function pretty well as it is. I don't know that it, it needs a second one. The fire code doesn't require it because I got it on both sides, so.
Okay, build a soccer field.
Uh, I guess we need to vote.
Yep.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second. All right, roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Carries 7-0.
And the last one is a request for a waiver of street improvements in conjunction with Village Travel. This is a, uh, structure that's being built at the end of the street and as you see on this, the master street plan shows an extension. Is this forty fifth, forty eighth place? Forty?
Yeah, forty fifth, I think.
Forty fifth place, yeah, forty fifth street. And they're asking for, uh, waivers of doing any of those improvements. They'll have an access there on the, on the cul-de-sac. They'll donate the right of way, but they're not doing any street improvements. And right now, it just goes up to that and it doesn't, doesn't connect with anything. But we would have the right of way if we extended this further on to the north. The Plenary Commission recommends approval of, oh, no. I, I take that back. The Plenary Commission recommended payment in lieu of improvements. Um, the title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb, gutters and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Village Travel Center in connection with L-2264, a large-scale development plan and it's option three. And this is what the building itself is going to look. It's going to be a maintenance facility for the Village Bus Line. You see the structures on the top is really what it's going to look like. That's kind of showing us their colors, their brand colors and that's the layout for that location. It comes in as a non-large scale because that's a commercially developed.
So the improvements they'll be making, if this is approved this way, they'll be making payment in lieu of will be basically sidewalk and some drainage?
Well, and half the street, basically. Half the street if it were extended, yes. Half the street.
Or if it were.
Curb gutter and sidewalks. That's, that's what the master street plan shows it to be extended beyond that cul-de-sac and that's what it's for.
So it's basically everything along the west side of this property?
Mm-hmm.
Is what they're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Doing payment in lieu of?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. And if the street is extended, I don't know if they would look at changing the location of the drive. I mean, I don't know that we have anything planned to move that forward, but that's, that's what's on the master street plan.
I move for approval, option three.
And is this, so this sidewalk is not can, going to connect to anything?
It'll connect and go around to the other side of the cul-de-sac until the rest of the development is done.
So they are adding a sidewalk?
Yeah, they'll add pieces of the sidewalk to get around. When you get to the north side of their drive, I don't know that there's much room to put a sidewalk, but it'll connect to the one to the south.
On the south, okay.
Okay.
And Amy Rick put theirs in, as you can see, it's on that, on that aerial. It's already in there, yeah.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item eight, uh, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Uh, Jeff, you want to take that or you want? I think Mike Lawson.
Okay.
Did that at the.
And I don't have my notepad, so if Mike doesn't mind. I don't know that I remember, but I'll take it.
You'll, they'll come back to you.
I'm good for two weeks, so I'm not good for, or one week, I'm not good for two. All right, we had, uh, two before us that night in finance. The first resolution, uh, I'll go ahead and read it. It's a resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for construction of Luther George Park Improvement Project. Uh, it was milestone, was eleven seven three, eleven seven thirty-eight, three seventy-two was the price to exceed. And I don't believe we had any conversation or issues that night or discussion, best I remember.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman. Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carries 7-0.
The second was a resolution, uh, it was recommended for approval as well. I'll go ahead and read it. Uh, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Crossland Heavy Contractors, Inc. for construction of South Dixieland Road Extension. And like I said, it was forwarded. I know there was some conversation from Ben that they didn't take the original bid and I'll let you discuss that, but it is Crossland.
Yeah, we, we opened, uh, opened bids November 1st and there were three bidders and, uh, the apparent low bidder was Boyle's Construction out of Little Rock. We've never worked with them before, so we did some research and, uh, they had a little irregularity in their bid. They had one item that really is about $575,000 that they cost themselves by type, putting in a wrong number. So in looking at that and then looking at their financial situation, stability and the amount of equipment that they have available, it's our recommendation that we move on to the second bidder, um, which is Crossland Heavy Contracting. The engineer's estimate was $10 million, so this is about 25% under the engineer's estimate, so we're still getting a very good price. And we're also working with someone that, that we know and, and is currently working on the Harbor Avenue project and, and doing a good job. So that's, that's why we're recommending that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Kay Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman. Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carries 7-0.
All right. Item nine, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is a resolution auth, authorizing the grant of a general utility water sewer easement across property owned by the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. This is actually at the airport and it's in connection with a, uh, fire hydrant extension for a new hangar going in at the airport that the, uh, water and sewer department needed a small additional easement and what was there already.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
So who are we granting this easement to?
Springdale Water.
It's attached on page, read page 59 in the, the easement document.
It's kind of silly question, you know, after all these years, but is it city property? Do we have to grant an easement to Springdale Water?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I guess they're not technically.
Separate commission.
We've done it numerous, numerous times on various different things over the years.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yes.
I think so.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 7-0.
All right, Colby's not here tonight. Uh, a res, I'll read number 10. Uh, resolution authorizing the destruction of old accounting records. And, uh, do we have to, does the council have to decide? You don't have to have anybody there? Then we won't be there?
They can just pass the resi, unless you want to make Rex or Amelia or somebody.
As long as I see Colby rip page by page, I'll be fine with that.
We should ask Kathy to come back and do it.
No machines.
He put it on his resume.
It's certain number here. How many years? How many years?
Yeah, Rex Bailey can do it.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion.
How many years of records is that? I forget.
We do it once a year, I think.
Seven years old?
Yeah, seven, some seven, some five. There's a list in there if you look at them.
I don't, I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Harriman. Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Carries 7-0.
All right, and I'll go ahead and read 11, Ann is here, uh, from the library, but it's a resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Library Board. This is, uh, to appoint Matt Fryer. Matt was on for some years and was off a little bit and now he's, he's willing to come back on, fill a vacancy. So I've read the resolution. I think Matt, Rex, Rex got the motion and Randall second. All right, roll call, please.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. Ann, please pass along our thanks to Matt for his willingness to serve. I do have one before we go to council member. Uh, Ben, what, what was it I was going to try and bring up? Oh, uh. Marchant, Carrie Smith and 112. I just wanted to bring it up in case you're still getting questions. We, I know we got some emails about it, about the need for a temporary signal out there. Uh, and we're working on that. Ben, do you want to, just real quick, uh, working with James, basically, and, and we still got to get approval from RDOT, but tell us.
Well, we, we've got the initial approval from RDOT. So they had done a warrant study a while ago and it came back that it did not warrant a signal. We asked them to, to review that and that we had enough equipment in our inventory that we could probably put together a temporary signal. So they went back, reviewed it and it did warrant a signal, so they're okay with us putting up a temporary, so. Shiloh and Huntsville, are there any others? Should we, should we start bidding on these? So anyway, it's our intent to, to, we've got to draw it up, submit it to them. It's going to be a process, but we do have the ability to put a signal there now.
We want to be sure y'all knew that in case you get some questions because traffic is pretty bad out there.
So if you're doing a temporary, is that until they improve Highway 112? Is that what it is?
That's right. It's, it's with the Highway 112 improvement that's slated to get a roundabout.
They're putting a roundabout in? That's.
Yes.
Should we take down the temporary?
Yeah. Put it back in inventory and use it another day.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Ben, I need to ask you, Ben, I need to ask you a question. When that comment section for the council? Can I do it now?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, 64th Street. When is it supposed to be done? And you might, you might have answered this question before, but I've been asked numerous times.
Yeah, um, I would have, if you'd asked me last month, I would have told you November 18th. However, AT&amp;T had a line that was found to be in the way and it's delayed things just a bit. Right now, I, I would say that I think we'll be driving on it by Christmas.
Well, actually, it's, it's open now. I drove it, I drove it this afternoon.
Yeah.
And, uh, but down to, southbound, uh, as you approach Watkins, you've got one lane.
That's right.
Southbound.
So that's what I'm saying, by Christmas, you'll have two lanes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So you can, you can drive it now.
I've been asked a bunch of questions and I, I've been meaning to ask, but I keep forgetting.
Uh, now it's phase one. That's just from four, between 412 and Watkins?
Yeah. Yes, that's, that's, that's where.
When we're, when we're having issues with, with the companies like this, can we not just run a, like a line under there for them to run it through whenever they get around to it instead of holding up huge projects? I mean, if we could just.
Well, the problem is it was an existing line and it's fiber optic. So you can't break that line. It'll put, how many ever thousand people out of, out of internet service, so.
Sure.
So you got to wait for that line to be lowered. And all they did was came dug right alongside of it. They were in the trench a little bit lower than where it was and the problem solved. But it just takes time, once you find it, to go through the process of getting them out there to do it. We would do that if it were a new, like if it were Dixieland and there was some utilities that, that wanted to be there but weren't on our timeline, sure, we'd throw some conduit under there and, and move on, let them use it at a later date. Um, there's some conduit under Don Tyson Parkway in various areas for exactly that.
Okay, good question. All right, any other comments from council? City attorney?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm empty. All right, we're adjourned, thank you.